Good evening. It is 5:30. The Chair will call the November 4, 2014, meeting of the City Council to order if he drives for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the Kirk please call the room?
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lesko.
Here.
Alderman Canman.
Here.
Alderman Jobe.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Thailand.
Here.
Alderman Doug.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here. Director McCarty is going to pass out his report. We have a presentation from Sickich, who is our auditor, and we have Chad Lucas, who is going to do it.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the city again this year. This is our second year of the audit process. I'll quickly go through. I understand you've had a chance to look through the information, but I'll quickly go through a few things, just to touch on some highlights, and then be happy to answer, try and answer any questions that you may have. The first thing that I wanted to quickly go through was the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This is your audit report, and it includes, you participate in the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement Program, which means that your financial information in your CAFER goes above and beyond the basic reporting requirements. It includes both an introductory section and a statistical section. The introductory section includes some background information on the city and some highlights on some different things going on at the city. The statistical section includes 10-year trend information for a lot of different things like debt, revenue sources, demographics, things of that nature. Just wanted to point out that our independent auditors' report is on pages 1 through 3. This is an unmodified, clean opinion, so everything, we believe that everything included in this financial statements is appropriately reported. Couple of things, just to point out, the management discussion and analysis that's included in the CAFER gives you, it's written by management, and it gives you some comparative information last year versus this year, and some discussion on fluctuations, why things increased, decreased. It has some graphs in there, and so this is kind of where you can get the most bang for your buck in terms of reading the 200-plus-page report. Just a couple of things to point out, in terms of your financial position as of 2/28/14, your financial position actually deteriorated over the course of 2014 from the prior year. And the discussion on why that happened is in the management discussion analysis. Couple of things that I wanted to point out also too in the CAFER is, included in the required supplementary information is some information about your pension status, your pension funding. So there's information about the IMRF, police and fire pension, and then also your retiree health plan. That's just a kind of a quick overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the CAFER.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Simpson.
Thank you. You just mentioned that our rating went down. Can you explain, just a very short synopsis, why?
The rating, I'm not sure, the position deteriorated, meaning you had a net loss for the year.
Okay.
And so that information is actually discussed.
Okay, I know that it is.
Okay.
But the members of the public who are listening to us don't get a copy of this.
Sure, sure. So that information's on page, MDA, page 7, and it includes a list of things of why the increase or decrease happened. The operating revenues increased slightly. Public health and safety accounted for about $10.5 million in growth of government activities expenses. One of those, part of that reason, I believe, is related to some pension, the expense related to the retiree health insurance liability.
Mm-hmm.
That's a significant portion of it, of the public health and safety increase of $10.5 million or so. Capital asset deletions of $2.2 million. Salaries and fringes increased, $2.1 million. Contractual services increased, $2.8 million. Highways and streets accounted for an additional $11.5 million in growth, mostly due to an increase of depreciation resulting from a policy change to increase your capitalization threshold from $5,000 to $15,000. That was a policy change you had during the year. So those are just a few of the highlights.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Chad, could you explain what happens next year as far as the new rules for how we calculate rate of return for our invested police and fire pension funds and how we have to project the rate of return on those funds going forward?
Yeah, I mentioned this last year in the future accounting pronouncements, which is in the board communications packet, and that's another item, one of the other reports that I have. But GASB 67 and 68 are required to be implemented in the two successive years, 67 for fiscal year 15, and that applies to the separate disclosures for the pension plans. And then 68 is applicable for your fiscal year ending 2/28/16. And so those, that'll be implemented in that year. Essentially, what this does is it changes, it kind of splits the funding and the reporting requirements, it kind of, the GASB reporting requirements currently have you reporting what your contributions are to the pension plans, the required contributions to the pension plans. That's not going to be the case any longer. The liabilities which are currently in your required supplementary information are going to become a liability on your financial statement under this new method. Along with that is some changes to the assumption requirements for calculating the required, the actuarially determined contribution amount. And that's going to include both, it's going to be a blended rate that the actuary has to use, both your long-term investment rate of return for the amounts that are actually funded, and for the amounts that are unfunded, you're going to have to use a 20-year municipal geo-tax exempt AA-rated bond rating. So it's going to change the rates that are used to determine your calculations.
And I'm not asking for your opinion on this, but from those that I've talked with, they expect those changes to lower the rate of return assumptions that the city's been using for many, many years. At present, we use a 7.5 percent expected rate of return on future funds. When we drop that down to, let's say, 6.5 percent, that would increase our, the amount of the employer contribution to our police and fire pension funds by roughly 25 percent.
That would probably be a correct assumption. Again, that's a reporting issue. The funding requirements, and you would have a, your current funding policy, I believe, is that you use the statutory minimum, which is required by the state of Illinois, to determine what your required contributions are. So again, that's a, the issue that you're talking about, the blended rate, is a GASB issue, it's a reporting issue. It's not necessarily a, it's tied to a funding issue.
And when would be the first budget year that the city of Springfield will face that new GASB rule?
It will be for fiscal year 16.
So we've got one year to get ready for it?
Correct.
Or actually, we've got, excuse me, we've got five months to get ready for it?
Yes, yeah, it's for the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, Mr. Lucas, thank you. Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October 21, 2014, City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next matter on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded at discussion.
Discussion, Mayor. Request, request that ordinance 14-388 be placed on the debate agenda. That has to do with the purchase of 40 squad cars, police squad cars.
Second.
Mayor, I'd request that 2014-383, establishing our meeting dates for the next year, be placed on the debate agenda.
Second.
Okay, with those two exceptions, all those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Agenda numbers 2012-123, 2013-174, 2013-376, 2013-397, 2014-085, and 2014-293 remain tabled or in committee. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a resolution, is agenda number 2014-383, a resolution providing public notice of regular meetings of the council of the city of Springfield, Illinois for 2015 calendar year. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-283 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded.
383.
383, excuse me.
I move we put it on final passage.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, I used the wrong number there. Discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend this ordinance to change the meeting set for April 7, 5:30 p.m., to the next day, April 8. April 7 is the date of the city election. Today is the general election, we're electing the governor. I see that two of our members are not present because of the election. We probably should have moved this meeting to Wednesday, but you know, it's too late for that, so in any event, the motion is to move the April 7 meeting, a date of the city election, the next day, April 8.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Is there further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion as amended, vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 8-0. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-385, a resolution estimating real property taxes to be levied against fiscal year 2015 and finance expenditures for fiscal year 2016. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-385 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 8-0. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-386, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with an authorizing payment in the amount of $30,000 to Spear Financial Incorporated to service the city's independent financial advisor regarding the city's second phase of general obligation bonds for the infrastructure program for the Office of Budget and Management. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-386 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded at discussion.
A discussion, Mayor. This information that we have here comes from a gentleman that would like to address the City Council, so at the conclusion of presenting this information, I hope the motion would be withdrawn to allow this gentleman to come to the council and discuss the information. The gentleman is Mr. Hamilton. He lived in this area for some time, his son went to one of the local high schools here, and he's, I don't know his exact title, the Director of the Central Illinois Economic Development Authority. This economic development authority has, by state law, was created in 2006, and this year, they became authorized to issue double-exempt bonds. And their authority, their maximum bonding authority has increased from a quarter of a billion to a half a billion, in other words, $500 million. And they just recently issued their first set of bonds, $8 million of bonds, having to do with an affordable housing project here in Springfield. And they've got two or three other projects, bonding projects, in the works that would total some $13 million. This gentleman would like to come to our City Council and discuss the advantages to the city of Springfield getting involved in double-exempt bonds. He's calculated that the potential savings will reach about $1 million, up to $1 million, depending on the size of our bond issuance. The reason he can't be here tonight is that he fell, and he's literally got seven broken ribs. And he would very much like to have been here, but he just simply can't be here because of that situation. I know, Mr. McCarty, you've been very open-minded towards double exempts, and I think the reluctance to go down that path is not really coming from a reluctance on the city's part, but from the Chicago-based financial advisor, the Spear Financial, that we're, which has a contract before us to spend $30,000 on a Chicago-based financial advisor, who I don't think is sufficiently informed about this new bonding authority that we have here in central Illinois that allows for double exempts. So the request is to delay this until we get more information.
Mr. McCarty?
I am familiar with this organization. We did meet with representatives from this organization last year, previous to us going out and issuing the bonds that we did. The opinion that you all received recently from Spear Financial, from Mr. McCann, who's the president, mirrors the same opinion that Mr. Kaplan had last year, our financial advisor from the Chicago area. And I don't want to get into the details, you all have the information, but at the end of the day, both felt that it was not worthwhile for the city to pursue. If you wish to wait and to listen to the gentleman, that is fine, but it certainly isn't going to change the opinion. As far as the credentials of Spear Financial, they are the number-one financial advisor for public issuances in this state, and one of the tops in the nation. So I very much do trust their opinion, and we went through an extensive process in choosing Spear Financial to be the city's next financial advisor group. We went through research, we went through several interviews, we checked with individuals who are using them for references. It was a month-long-plus process, so I just get a little concerned if you are questioning the credentials of the financial group that we've chosen, because we did do a lot of work in there, number-one in the state and one of the tops in the nation.
No, it's not a question of questioning any credentials, it's just that, and I've read the opinion that Mr. Spear sent you, he just is not well-informed about certain recent changes in the law that's taken place. And like I say, the law was changed just this year with regard to the bonding authority and the, and the double-exempt bonding authority of the Central Illinois Development Authority. And they've just, like I say, issued just this September 2014, they did the $7 million financing for the rehabilitation of 96 affordable housing units of the Huntington Ridge apartment complex here in Springfield. So this is just something recent that's happening, Mr. McCarty, and I don't think Spear Financial up in Chicago is familiar with what's going on here in central Illinois, and we should be really mindful of the laws that the General Assembly passed, which are intended to permit local government authorities to issue bonds at lower expense to the issuing authority than what would otherwise be, so.
If we were going to go that route, we would probably look more closely at the Illinois Finance Authority versus this particular group. That was the discussion we had last year, but again, at the end of the day, the conclusion was that it was best to do it the way that we did it. And of course, we'll defer to whatever the council wishes are. The only thing that I'll say is that we are moving along quite quickly with the next round of issuance for the infrastructure program. Our intent is to do another issuance at the end of January once again, because we did have so much success with that last year, and we are in the process of working with Spear and working with our underwriters and working with our bond council and all that to draft the next ordinance that should be coming before this council shortly. So the one concern I would have is that the delay that that would put towards our next round of geo-bonds for the infrastructure program.
Further discussion?
Mayor, I want to ask a question for Alderman McMiniman. You're saying that if we did the double-exempt bonds rather than the bonds that are on the table right now, we, the city would save $1 million. Is that in interest payments over the life of the bonds? Is that what you're talking?
That's a reduced interest, a reduced interest rate of what we would pay, because the bonds become so sufficiently attractive to investors that they're, that they're willing to earn a lower interest rate, because they know that interest will be exempt both for federal income tax and state of Illinois income tax. And as Illinois state income tax has risen to higher levels, the attractiveness of these kinds of bonds has increased. And I think the, the actual savings, I think, would be better presented by Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Torcelli and some other local persons that are familiar with this.
Question for Director McCarty. Why did Spear Financial think that the, the conventional bonds would be better for the city to be?
They didn't believe, because of the limited.
Let me finish the question, Director, if I could. Why the conventional bonds would be better than these double-exempt bonds for the city if the city would save $1 million in interest?
Because they don't feel that, neither Mr. Kaplan nor Mr. Spear, or the Spear Financial Group, Mr. McCann, feel that that's the case. They feel that the increased cost of issuance would, would not, would be outweighed by, any savings would be outweighed by that. And they feel that there's only a few places in the country where the tax exemption actually would work. So I don't have the opinion in front of me, I sent it to you all like a week ago. If you want to go back and check through email, it's there, but Mr. Kaplan had the exact same opinion a year ago.
So the cost of issuance would be $1 million?
And the other thing that we're not sure about, that we don't believe is, one of our main goals last year was making sure that we made these bonds available locally to individuals through retail outlet, which we were very successful at, and we want to make sure that we're able to do that again.
Okay, well, I assume that could be done if they're double-exempt bonds also. But you're saying that the cost of issuing the bonds would be approximately at the, a $1 million, and that's what would eat up the savings?
I'm not saying that we don't have numbers to it. What I'm saying is, if you go back and look at the opinion, you will see that they feel that it is not worth it, that the savings just won't materialize.
Mayor, well, as a matter of parliamentary procedure or corporation counsel, we now have a motion that's before the body, so if there was, the body wanted to postpone this, I would have, is it correct that the maker of the motion would have to withdraw their motion, and then, we have a motion to pass this resolution now, and Alderman McMiniman is suggesting that we hold off for, I don't know, a couple of weeks. But to do that, as a parliamentarily, the maker of the motion would have to withdraw the motion, is that correct?
No, my understanding is if there's a motion to delay something, that, that would be a, you know, a motion that has to be addressed first before the main motion.
Okay, that would supersede that, okay.
Alderman Simpson?
Director McCarty, this $30,000 is based on what? Is it based on the amount? What's it based on?
The $30,000 is not to exceed, Alderman.
Okay, but it's, it's a figure that's, is it based on the amount of?
The issuance.
Okay.
Correct, you are correct.
If I, technically, I think that, if I recall reading it, there's a $10,000 fee plus a percentage of the bonds issued not to exceed $30,000 in total cost.
Correct.
Just, was that the same fee that we paid to Kaplan last time?
Well, Mr. Kaplan, we had an agreement to do the, to do the full issuance over three years, and I believe it was a not-to-exceed $57,000, if I recall correctly. So we paid him around, I believe it was around $30,000 for the first year, because there was so much work that went into year one, and then the subsequent years were going to be much less.
Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, if my memory serves me correctly, on the email, it was, people are going away from this, and there's not much interest in the purchase. I mean, that was his explanation?
Right, I think you're correct, Alderman.
Do what?
I think you're correct, Alderman.
Yeah, that, and it kind of piqued my interest when you said there's a specialized area that it may work, but it may not work here in our community. And I think that's kind of what Kaplan said.
There's, I believe you mentioned Puerto Rico, the state of Illinois, and there might have been one other place, but again, it's been a week or so since I've looked at it.
Mr. Mayor, I think the folks up in Chicago are just factually in error, and I think that they're just not well-informed about what's going on here. Mr. Hamilton, and I'd like to share this to all the council members, Mr. Hamilton explains that there are now 10 regional development authorities within Illinois, 10 of them. And this Central Illinois Development Authority is just the most recent. In total, they've issued over $600 million worth of bonds. So when Mr. McCarty says that, quote, "There's just not an interest in these bonds," that's just not correct. And we have to really base our decisions on correct information and allow those that are trying to bring us something here that'll save us money a chance to do so. So, you know, whatever the council decides is okay with me, all we can do is try to get the best information by which to make decisions.
Did you just say that this was, they had just done one of these issues?
The Central Illinois Economic Development has got one that's done, and they've got three that are pending.
Alderman Thailand?
Director McCarty, refresh my memory, how, if I remember right, we sold out on last year's bond sale. How quickly did we sell out?
We were oversubscribed, I believe, within two hours.
We had $27 million worth of bonds to per-sale, and we had over $75 million worth of retail.
At the end of the day, remember, last year, we were planning to do a retail on Wednesday and a institutional on Thursday. We never made it to the institutional, because the success, the retail was wildly successful. Within two hours, we had $52 million worth of subscriptions for $27 million worth of bonds, and by the end of the day, the mayor is correct, it was around, I believe, $72 to $73 million worth of orders.
So in this particular case, I mean, it's fairly, fairly reasonable to predict that more than likely will, our demand will out exceed our supply again?
I would anticipate. Yes.
With the current issuance as it is.
Yes, especially given the fact that in the last year, the, we've had some improvement in our financials in terms of our fund balance, which of course goes a long way into determining what our ratings are.
Now, if we were to turn around, if you were to, if we were to go ahead and pass this one and move on, is there anything that would prevent us from having you work with Alderman McMiniman's contact and look into maybe doing a second issuance of some of these double-exempt bonds if it does work out?
There is nothing that would preclude us from looking into it further, no.
So we could pass this and then still look at doing what Alderman McMiniman is suggesting?
Certainly. Either way, we're going to need a financial advisor.
Thank you.
The point is that this financial advisor seems to be antagonistic towards the getting the folks involved.
I would not characterize it as antagonistic.
Well, I read his email, I think he's negative towards using Central Illinois Economic Development Authority to issue double exempts. I think he's got a negative attitude about it.
I will tell you, Mr. Kaplan.
Further discussion, Mayor?
Just a question for Alderman McMiniman. How long does Mr. Hamilton, if we wanted to delay this for Mr. Hamilton to come in and address the council or committee in the whole, how long does he need?
Well, his health condition is, you know, improving. I think he hopes to be here two weeks from now.
I make a motion, we delay this for two weeks.
I second the motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Defeated. Further discussion, Alderman Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Spear Financial, if we, if this goes through, they will work for us, for us, is that correct?
Correct.
And they will do what we ask them to do, is that correct? With regard to, if we just determine that we want to do double-exempt bonds, they will do what we want them to do, with regard to what they feel about it, is that correct?
Correct. They are our financial advisors.
Thank you.
So if we want to go with double exempt, they'll advise us on how to do that.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 6-2. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-387, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1 million for payments to the police and fire pension funds. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2014-387 on final passage.
So moved.
Or second?
Second.
Moved and seconded at discussion.
Discussion, Mayor?
Alderman Lesko?
Once again, I want to ask my fellow seatmates to reconsider this. I'm not looking at defeating this. I just think that it's a bad time right now to do it. We're current with our payments to our pensions, we're not behind. You know, last week, we got an opinion from our CWLP Director of Finance, and tonight, I'd like to ask for an opinion from our Director, Bill McCarty, of our Director of Finance for the city. And I, the opinion I want is... And the opinion I want is, isn't there a better time to do this? What monies are needed right now for the city, and what monies are needed right now for the pension payments? I'd like to staff the opinion.
Well, it's a loaded question, Alderman.
Sorry.
You know, our position has been from the beginning that we are in support of doing these types of things. We've demonstrated that. Mayor Houston, a couple of years ago, instructed to take some of the surplus and to put it towards the police and fire pensions. And so generally, we're in support of this type of an action. But as we said from the beginning, we prefer to do these things more towards the end of the year, and there are some things that we are concerned about. I'm not going to sit here and question the wisdom of the council as how they choose to move forward as a whole, and certainly, we will defer to the requests of the council. But if you're asking me if it's better to hold on to it for a little bit and move it later, certainly, that's been our opinion all along. But if the council chooses to go ahead and issue the supplemental, then we will move forward with the transfer per the council's wishes. You know, we still have a few things that'll be coming in that we've talked about, and I don't want to beat a dead horse with the EPA loan and all that. And we do have some things going on next year that will have to fit into the budget that we're a little concerned about, that we've recently found out about with regards to technology upgrades here at the city. We have to upgrade our servers, and we have to upgrade our ERP system, which is our financial system. And that alone is $2 million. So, you know, that will be shared between the utility and the city. So do we have concerns? Yes, we have concerns every year. Our opinion all along has been we should probably wait, but we also are supportive of such actions as we've demonstrated in the past. So in terms of the timing, we simply will defer to the wishes of the council and do what is asked.
Thank you. And that was my point exactly. And I want to make very certain that I'm not against this payment. You know, I'm not against that we're making a payment for the pensions. I think it's a good thing. I just think our timing is really, really off right now. We're trying to, we're trying to purchase a new car right now before we need to, to make an example. We just need to hold on to this money. I asked my seatmates to reconsider this, not to defeat it, just to hold up, wait till the end of the year, see if we need this money. And if we don't, then we can fit it toward the pensions.
Alderman Edwards?
Yeah. I just, I look at this and I go, okay, we passed this once, and it's really the money from fiscal year 15, if I remember right. So this was done at the end of the year as a request of the administration. This is money that was generated last year. Now we're saying, let's hold it till the end of this year. Okay, I get that. But in the ordinance right below it, we're very willing to spend a million dollars. And you go, well, that's a loan. Well, the reason you're going to have that money is because you got a bond that's expiring, I think it's about $900,000 or $950,000, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're going to continue that payment on. So on one hand, we're saying, hold back and hold the money, but the very next ordinance is, let's spend some money. So if you want to hold this ordinance, I might go along with that if you hold the next ordinance and say, let's not spend any money, guys, because we're going to be in trouble here down the road. What we're saying is, let's hold this, but let's spend it down here. So you can't have it both ways. And the very people that will vote to hold this or say, don't spend it, will be the very people on the next ordinance wanting to spend a million bucks. So I think if you want to do that, that's fine with me. But I think you can't have it both ways. If we're going to hold money, then let's hold it to the end of the year. Let's see how it goes. Let's buy our police cars at the end of the year, make sure we make it through everything. And the same thing with your deal here. Let's hold it to the end of the year and see what goes. That way, we got money and we know where we're at. I don't have a problem with that. But you can't sit here and say, let's hold a million dollars, and then the ordinance, next ordinance below it, you spend a million dollars. Because that money is coming, and maybe I'm wrong here, but that's coming from an expired bond, where you're just going to continue the payment. So that money would be available to you if you have an emergency.
Alderman Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to respectfully differ from my good friend, Alderman Edwards. Spending the million dollars as an additional payment to the pension fund is not the same as the immediate need of police cars and equipment for the police. It's really different. It really is. And if I voted against this million dollars for the pension fund, and I'm going to vote for 388, it doesn't, does not mean that I don't get it, because I do. But I agree with Alderman Lesko. I agree with Alderman Lesko.
That bright red shirt got you.
I got a birthday tomorrow, too, so anyway, that, you know, spending this million dollars is, again, akin to saying, well, you know, I'm making payments on my car on a regular basis, but I want to, I'm going to double up. I don't, I'm going to double up, although I've got bills sitting here that I need to pay, but I'm going to, I'm going to kind of ignore them and double up on my car payment that I don't need to double up on. And I don't think that that's the way you run a household, and I don't think that's the way you ought to be, ought to be running and spending the money that we have. We need to make sure we wait and see what we have coming up, so that we make sure that we have the money, and then we don't get to that point and say, wow, I wish we had not. I don't want anybody to be in a position of saying, I wish we hadn't done that. So I'm in agreement with Alderman Lesko, and I'm not going to vote for, we need to hold it, and I wish we would, I wish we wouldn't be in a hurry to do this. I know it, in some circles, it's going to make us look good, but I don't think it's the best thing to do.
Alderman Kim?
Alderman Lesko, you said that passing this ordinance is like purchasing a new car, which we don't need. This isn't purchasing a new car. This is an old car that we bought a long time ago, but haven't paid for. We had an obligation to fund these pension funds for years, even though we may have made our legally minimum required payment, that didn't, that wasn't sufficient really to, we know that wasn't sufficient to fund these pensions, and that, you know, the rate of return is probably overstated from what we actually do earn. We did have the ordinance to purchase new cars, more new cars than we allocated in the budget. That was before the council a few weeks ago. And you said that not to vote for that was to vote against public safety, which wasn't true, because not to vote against that, we still had sufficient funds in the budget to purchase police cars. This was just to go above, that was just to go above and beyond and put in, and borrow money. So I think this is an obligation that, you know, this is a, was a good, it was, it was a good measure when it was first voted for by the council, and it was compromised back. Alderman McMiniman first proposed to spend the entire surplus of the pilot on making pension payments to the police and fire pensions. He scaled it back in half. I think it's a reasonable compromise. It made sense when we first passed it, and I think it still makes sense today.
Alderman Lesko?
Well, you're comparing apples to oranges, Alderman. And again, you know, we're not talking about, it's a wrong expenditure, whether you're talking about purchasing a new car, whether, that was just an analogy that I used. You're spending money right now that you don't need to spend. You're making a payment to make the payment ahead. Could you do it? Sure, you can do it. But you're spending money that you really don't need to do. It's not good business. And the city needs to look at running the city as running a business. You don't pay your money up ahead to a bill that you're current on and let the other ones lapse. I mean, it's just, and to say the public safety, now, I didn't say that, and you're prefabricating that, Alderman, when you sit there and say that it was a question of public safety. Because the chief stood up here at the counter and said that we're talking about optimum safety, optimum efficiency, optimum performance. There's a difference in saying that it's not being safe. I want our police and our fire to be able to operate at optimum efficiency. I want to give them whatever they need to do, to do their jobs the best that they can. That's what I'm saying. And you can have your own opinion, I can have my opinion, and we can agree or disagree. But this is a bad business move. If we spend this money to pay down the pensions when we don't have to do it, when we're current right now with our payments.
Alderman Tyler?
All right. I have to say that both Alderman Edwards and Alderman Lesko make your points. But one of the things I look at on this is, is I think it's pretty much the will of this council, that when we get through budget season, plan was to put at least a million dollars into the pensions anyway. If you're going to do it, I think most financial gurus out there, from Dave Ramsey all the way through to the, you know, the Malcolm Burko and some of the others that you'll read in the paper, would say that if you can make that payment a few months earlier, it's going to gain you on the future value of that money. I think that this million dollars is going to go toward pension, whether we do it now or whether we do it in February. The second half of this, and it pains me to say it, but Joe McMiniman actually compromised on this one. He wanted $2 million to start with, and he reached out, and he was reasonable and did the compromise. And he said, you know, a million's better than nothing. And we had looked at him, and we, those of us who voted yes the first time, we agreed to that compromise. And I thought long and hard about this. And after hearing what Alderman Edwards had to say last week, I had to change my opinion, because I think he's right. We pretty much already said and gave our word, and my word needs to mean something. And I gave my word to Alderman McMiniman that I was going to vote for this when I voted for it last time. So I'm going to keep it and do it again.
Alderman Griffin?
I think we might have got lost here a little bit tonight in semantics. Mr. McCarty, you back there where I can get to you? Maybe not? Okay. We'll go to my other point first, and I'll get him in just a moment. Mr., I think we kind of got, kind of a lapse in semantics there. We talk about, we're paying what we need to be paying. If we're paying what we need to be paying, we'd have an unfunded liability of zero. What's our, we're paying what we legally need to make as a minimum payment based upon what could be a higher-than-realistic expectation of return. Our unfunded liability at this point is, give me a, give me a.
Round numbers, it's $230 million.
$230, in reality, we're.
$230, we're hundreds of millions of dollars behind.
So we're not paying what we need to be paying, because we've already accrued this bill.
But that's not liability that's due today, Alderman.
That's correct. What I'm saying is, we talked a moment ago and saying, we're putting in what we need to be putting in. We're putting in what we legally need to be putting in. We're not putting in what we legally, we need to put in to pay the bill.
Well, that's not technically true. If you look at the actuarial required contribution reports that we have, and we distribute, and I gave you some information tonight you can look at to get an idea about where we are in terms of assets versus the expenses, and you will see that the assets far and away outweigh the expenses, and that's in graphical representation on what I gave you. But what we are doing is, we are following state statute and putting in our required contributions per state statute. That's step one. Step two is to make sure that we're making contributions which get us to 90% funding by 2040, which is also in state statute. So our payments are going to be what they need to be in order to get us to that 90% funding level by 2040. So one way or the other, we are going to get to a better funding level.
By 2040?
By 2040. That is state statute. We follow state statute.
And kind of what I was doing is looking at this expected return, et cetera, and I know we've been somewhat overprojecting, but, so I dropped it back to 6.5% of return. And so I said, okay, in 30 years, which is about a likelihood of an employee, starting with the city, that million dollars pays down $6.6 million of our unfunded liability over a 30-year cycle at 6.5% return on investment. So we're really talking about, are we putting in 30 years $6.6 million in tonight at cost of $1 million versus not? And we're trying to put this into the concept of a home budget, which is usually a lot easier for me to digest. And I think we talked about, we've already accrued this bill. This is like saying, if we don't pay the hospital bill, we can be able to have enough money on hand to make a car payment and buy a new car. That may be true, but that's not prudent. We've already accrued this bill. We've already had these people on. We do have this unfunded liability that we will be paying out at some point in time, and we will be paying the piper. And if, was it, say, 2040?
Yes.
There could be some very, very, very difficult decisions that have to be made in between now and then. Again, state legislatures got themselves in trouble by saying, but we won't be sitting around this horseshoe when it happens. And that, now it's there to where it has to be. So I say, we made this decision. I, again, echo what Mr. Tyler said. I compromised with Mr. McMiniman telling me he'd have my vote if he brought it back to a million dollars. And since I give him my word, as long as it's at a million dollars, I plan to support it.
Just one point. In, when we deal with state statutes, just to make everybody familiar with this, under those state statutes, starting in next year, if we are not making our minimum contribution, this is not only for the city of Springfield, this is across the state of Illinois, rather than the state giving us money, say, for our share of the income tax, that money will be diverted to the pension fund. So the reality is that those payments are, in fact, going to be made between now and 2040. And those numbers, as a percent of what they will take from us, the state automatically, if you're not doing this, increases each year. So this is going, going to be resolved one way or another. Either we will resolve it, or the state will resolve it for us as a result of the formula that they put together. Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, I think I got that. I understand that. Let me ask the chair, the mayor, this. We're missing two Aldermen tonight, and I think this is probably a pretty important vote, and they should be in on that vote. So I think, I'd like to ask, maybe it's already been out there, that both 387 and 3, the one we're working on now.
387?
Yeah, 387 and 388 be held in committee, so, or not committee, and so that the other Aldermen could have a chance to vote. Because I think this is an important vote, and I think we do need to take this vote. And I think all 10 Aldermen should be involved in the discussion. So I'm looking here, and I'm thinking, that's what we need to do.
Personally?
We're talking about a million dollars, and we're talking about spending it both ways. And two weeks isn't going to kill us, one way or the other.
I think you got, there's votes here to do it tonight, so.
Well, I do, too, but I think the other two ought to be included in on it, but.
Alderman Lesko?
You know, once again, we're looking at apples and oranges here. Those two cannot be coupled together. One is a payment to pay ahead on pensions that we are currently funding. The other is to purchase police cars so that we can have optimum efficiency in our city. They're two totally different things. We can't, we can't put those two things together and vote for those. And again, I understand, excuse me, I've got the floor, Alderman. And I understand what the other Aldermen are saying when they gave Mr. McMiniman their word. I can understand it, and I can appreciate that. I'm not asking for this thing to be defeated. I'm asking for it to simply be postponed till we can have a better financial output, or a better financial outlook at the end of the year. And it doesn't matter whether we said, hey, we're going to do it. It's good fiscal thinking to do it at the proper time. And I applaud Alderman McMiniman for what he has done, and I may be with him on this if we can do this at the proper time. But I don't think he can put the two together.
Further discussion? There are no further discussions. We got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes six-two. Okay, the next item on the agenda is number 2014-388, an ordinance authorizing purchase of 40 police pursuit vehicles in the amount of $1,43,200 for Marl Brothers Incorporated under State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Contract CMS 4017160, and authorizing sole source purchase of lights, sirens, and related equipment for Marl Brothers Incorporated
source purchase of lights, sirens, and related equipment for Marl Brothers Incorporated in amount of $269,200 for a total amount not to exceed $1,312,400 for the Springfield Police Department. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-388 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Discussion. Mr. Mayor, I think these two ordinance, the one we just considered and this one unlinked, because they really expose a very significant philosophy of spending money. Do you spend money on your pre-existing obligations first, or do you spend your limited resources on new obligations without first taking care of your pre-existing obligations? And I think that's what this really exposes here. And our original budget provided for $2 million of equipment spending, and when the need for the fire truck arose, I think we should have found a way to, to keep our spending level at, at the two million roughly, and to cut back our police car purchases down to twenty new cars instead of the forty. And that's, that's what careful management of money is all about. And I'm 100% in favor of take-home police cars, as some talk about there. If we don't buy forty new police cars, we're going to limit the number of take-home police cars. We've got plenty of squad cars, we've got over 240 squad cars of different types for every resident Springfield officer to take home a car, whether we buy twenty new squad cars or forty new squad cars. So I don't see that as an issue. And so my no on this vote is because I think we should have scaled down our equipment purchases to live within our budget. And I want to also talk about what's good business practice. A good business practice is to live within your means and to take care of obligations that should go along. So for twenty years, we have maybe met our quote-unquote "legal obligation" to fund our pensions, but during that course of time, our unfunded liability has grown massively. And when are we going to turn that around? And as we saw and heard from the CPA at the start of this meeting, if we really understood what he was saying to us, he was saying that, once we get realistic on our future rate of return, our unfunded liability is going to explode again from, not, Mayor Houston said we're at $230 million of unfunded liability, that's going to explode to about $300 million of unfunded liability. And guess what? We've got to get to 90% funded by year 2040. So during the time, Mayor, that you've been in office, our funded ratio hasn't changed, but the number of years that we have left to get to the 90% has shrunk by four years. So what we're doing is we're crowding all this, all this repayment on the future, and that's unfair. It's unfair to the citizens of tomorrow, it's unfair to the councils of tomorrow. And when we push all that debt out into the future, what we do is, we leave less money available for wages, services, equipment, and et cetera. So the earlier we start getting realistic, the better off we are. And $1 million of new spending and $1 million to retire old spending isn't going to make a huge difference, but it's the attitude that we bring to this question, and it's the philosophy that we bring to this, and that's what's important here, not the million dollars. Thank you, Mayor.
Chief, did you want to make a comment about the...
I just want to clarify, we have 126 marked pursuit vehicles, okay? That's marked squad cars. The number you're spouting off is the number that we have of all vehicles, including wrecked junk cars, et cetera, okay? Those are also special utility vehicles, those are the mobile command posts, those are other items, okay? We're talking squad cars. 126 squad cars, I believe we're down to 125 because we had one that, we just had the back line, I believe. So I think today it's 125, two months ago it was 126. With that, we have forty cars now, over, forty-five cars, over 95,000 miles. Each month that goes by, 2,000 miles or so are put on a car, okay? So when we sit here and say we have 250 cars or 240 cars, that's inaccurate as far as squad cars, okay?
Well, you got 250 cars, now, so you're saying that half of them are unmarked and half of them are...
Those are covert cars that we use for undercover cars.
Yeah, you got a whole lot that are unmarked all of a sudden.
Okay, we have 126 marked squad cars, okay? And possibly 125 as of we speak. With that said, all the other cars you're talking about are undercover cars that are seized vehicles, that are used for undercover investigations, those are special utility vehicles, those are special operations vehicles, that's everything we own, including wrecked junk cars. So when we sit here and talk about that we have all these marked squad cars, that's inaccurate. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Chief? May I ask the chief a question?
Yes.
Chief, these forty vehicles that would be purchased by this ordinance, will those all be marked squad cars?
Absolutely.
And then, are you going to then retire forty existing marked squad cars, or will this be in addition to the fleet?
A minimum of 26 that we're going to retire. We're going to try to hold on to a few, but most likely all forty will be retired due to the aging vehicles. We're looking at a 14-to-16-week delay, we're being told, for take purchase of these vehicles. So by the time we get those vehicles, get them equipped, we're talking a few months, by that time we'll have others that we're probably, that we were trying to hold off and keep, will probably have to go as well.
And the plan is also to equip all of these new squad cars with dash cams?
Correct, but that, that money is not included in this ordinance.
But that, okay, and I think you said, what did you say at the committee of the whole meeting, that each dash cam would be approximately how much?
We're looking for the best deal right now, but typically the ones we've been buying lately have been around $5,000 approximately. We're hoping to get a little bit cheaper than that. We're actually T and E-ing a couple that are a little bit cheaper to see how they work. So we're trying to be as frugal as possible with those dollars.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Further discussion?
Chief, I'm not trying to pick a fight with you. I think you're putting words in my, in my mouth, because when I said we've got plenty of take-home squad, take-home cars, I'm not, I didn't distinguish between marked or unmarked, I just said we got plenty of take-home cars. And I know a lot of our officers take home detective cars, unmarked cars, all kinds of cars. So I think we're, we're arguing about something that we're not arguing about. In other words, I didn't distinguish between marked and unmarked when I made my statement.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, I just, we got a budgeted number of $2 million. Is that right? And we got to that number because of the loan interest rate? Is that, I'm trying to ask him, Director.
Actually, what we have budgeted now is $3.1 million. And we also have $3.1 million in loan proceeds sitting in the bank for this purpose and for the other items on the list that we proposed to purchase with the bank loan.
Okay. My, my original question was, we, we did the budget.
The original was two.
Was $2 million.
Yes.
And I think the explanation that we got was, look, because of the interest rate that was so attractive, it kept our payment pretty much as we had budgeted in the budget, but that allowed us to expand the amount of equipment that we were going to purchase.
Correct, correct.
That was the explanation that was given to us. So we're not talking about, even though we're buying more equipment, we're talking about the same payment that we talked about at budget time. So that, let's say that payment's 800,000. That, that's the payment we're making is the 800,000 that was budgeted. Is that correct?
Correct. Actually, we are paying a little bit less than we had anticipated. We originally anticipated at budget time, annual payments of about $550,000, and our annual payment's going to be $475,000.
Okay, so...
So you're correct.
When we were okay with $2 million at, I don't care, make up an amount, we were going to buy $2 million worth of equipment at half a million dollars, just as the number, okay? Now, we're going to buy $3.1 million worth of equipment at a half a million dollars. So the budgeted number stays the same, the equipment that we purchased went up. And I think that's real important, not to mix our budgeted number with the amount that we're going to borrow, because the percentage came in, I think when we first talked about this, we were talking about a little less than 3%, and now we're at 1.5% or something?
1.39, actually.
Okay. So let's not get confused on where we're going here. I think, even though I, I made a statement earlier, we're willing, I'm willing to hold both of them, I think when you put the dynamics in, you say our budget number never increased, it never went up, it's going to stay exactly the same or a little less, but our equipment purchase is going to go up. I think that makes it better to swallow and to say, okay, I understand why our number went up for equipment purchase, but our budget number stays the same. And we all agreed around this table that we'd spend whatever that number is, and the budget, I, I can't recall what it is, and not go over that. And we kept our budgeted number, just the equipment purchase went up because the interest rate went down. Is that correct?
You're correct. The annual, the planned annual debt service payments that we'll be making on the loan are less than what we had anticipated at budget time.
And, and we voted to spend the $2 million.
And that was in the original budget, correct?
Further discussion?
Yeah, just further discussion. Frank, the, the point is that during the budget season, we obligated ourselves, we said we'd take on $2 million of new obligation. Now we're going to take on $3 million of new obligation. That's the difference, okay? You can spread that, you can retire that debt over more than one year, or two years, or three years, or four years, but the point is, we're obligating ourselves more than what we plan to obligate ourselves back during budget time. That's the main point.
Heard no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 7-1. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-390, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement with W.J. Selinger for property with no address assigned located on Rising Moon Road. The chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the city council to hold a public hearing regarding Agenda Number 2014-390.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Does anyone wish to address the city council regarding the annexation with W.J. Selinger LLC? The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the city council.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-390 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 9-0. Okay, the next item on the agenda is number 2014-391, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of rock salt from Cargill Incorporated Salt Division under state contract PSD 4017550 in an amount not to exceed $330,060 for the Office of Public Works for emergency passage. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-395 on emergency passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 9-0. Okay, the next item on the agenda is number 2014-391, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $15,000 for the Springfield Police Department for emergency passage. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-395 on emergency passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 8-0. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-395, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $15,000 for the Springfield Police Department for emergency passage. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-395 on emergency passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote aye. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 9-0. The next item on the agenda is number 2014-396, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of rock salt from Cargill Incorporated Salt Division under state contract PSD 4017550 in an amount not to exceed $330,060 for the Office of Public Works for emergency passage. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-395 on emergency passage.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded.
396, sir. Please. 396.
Excuse me, 396. It's been moved and seconded. Ordinance 396 on emergency passage. Discussion. We're asking for emergency passage. If anyone has followed what's happening with, with salt, we're buying this at about $55 a ton. I was talking to a private contractor, he's paying $200 a ton, and most municipalities around the state are paying well over $100. We just happen to have a multi-year contract on this, so. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 9-0. The chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2014-416, an ordinance amending Chapter 51, Section 51.31 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to residential building plumbing modification reimbursement program.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Opposed?
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2014-417, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $100,000 from sewer fund reserves for the Office of Public Works.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have, the chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2014-418, an ordinance authorizing the Springfield Convention of Visitors Bureau to partner with the Illinois Office of Tourism in Brand USA for 2014-2015 advertising campaign in Germany, United Kingdom, Japan, China, Canada, and Canada utilizing International Marketing Grant Number 15-373004 for media funding, any amount not to exceed $34,370.50.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then the chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2014-419, an ordinance authorizing execution of contract index number LL15-07-40 with and payment in an amount not to exceed $434,500 to Hinson Robinson Company of Springfield for the replacement of the chiller system at Lincoln Library.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business to become before the city council? Is there any new business? Alderman Thailand?
Yes, I had a constituent contact me with a concern, and I went to the city website and took a look. And he was ultimately able to find the information he was looking for, which was the leaf pickup information. But his suggestion, because it's something that is a hot topic amongst different, all over the city, actually, every ward, I think, probably gets the same calls I do, wanting to know when the pickup starts, when it ends, all the information. If we could put a link for that, both on the Public Works homepage as well as on the city homepage, I think that would be very beneficial to all the constituents. I, I do have to agree, I, you know, he contacted me first, saying he was unable to find it at all, and I did find it, and he did finally navigate to it, but it was frustrating for him, and I, I do have to say that I agree with him. However, on the, on the same conversation, he wanted to make sure that the city council, as well as Public Works, received a congratulations from him and from his neighbors. They couldn't be happier with what was done with the infrastructure tax money. His exact quote was that his, his street, which happened to be West Edwards, in the past, you had to swerve to avoid the potholes, and he said the work that was done with that tax money, he said, you know, you guys did exactly what you said you were going to do with it. He said there, our street has never looked better, the city has never looked better, and he looks forward to seeing what we do over the next two years of the plan. And he looks forward to seeing what we do over the next two years of the plan.
Thank you. Alderman Simpson?
Yes, Mr. Harvey. I received a phone call, a couple of phone calls, from an individual, individuals regarding electric bill, over $500 a month, in a medium-sized house. They've done an energy audit, did everything that the gentleman indicated they should do, and the bill was, the next month was higher. They're looking into what it possibly could be, but I just wanted to make you aware that this is going on, and I'm sure, you know, I can give you the address after the meeting. But I don't want us to drop the ball on this, because $500, $400 to $500 a month in a residence is a lot of money for electric. So, I don't know what's going on, but we need to make sure, and I'm being told, it's absolutely not our meter. But I don't want us to be that absolute. We need to make sure we look at every situation within this, with regards to this house, because this is a family with three children, and they cannot afford $500 electric bill. So, we need to make sure we're working together to figure out this problem.
We can look at it.
Thank you.
Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, Eric, oh, you're up there. I got a call from a gal that we're putting smart meters in, which I think is probably a good thing. But I guess they had no notice, or maybe they did have notice, but they were gone. And all they found on the front, I think I gave it to Joe to give to you guys, was a little notice saying, hey, we broke the block that the meter sits on. You're going to need to get an electrician. And the neighbor joined in across the street, and he said, yeah, I came home and had no power, so feel lucky you had power. But is there any way we could give these people a better notice than just kind of showing up at their door while they're at work and not being there? Because my worst fear is, we have somebody on a medical product in the home unbeknownst to us, and we do something, and all of a sudden, the power's out, and it creates an emergency. And that was their only complaint. They said, had we known, we'd have been able to kind of make adjustments on stuff, but just shutting the power off and then saying, you need to get an electrician to fix this. And they go, we didn't even know what's going to happen on our home. So, all I'm asking, is there a way, can we figure out a way to let these people know? We're going to be down this block, are we going to be here? We're going to be changing out a meter, which we need to do, saves us money, helps us in the long run, makes us more accountable to your bills, kind of what she's talking about, with just a better notice to the constituent that we're going to do this. And, you know, they weren't, she wasn't being belligerent or anything. She just said, had we known this was going to happen, we'd have made arrangements. So, we needed to have a better notice and a little sticker on the door. Otherwise, they didn't ever know when you were there.
And the person with the sticker on the door, we'll see what we can do to notify the area. It's hard, because depending like today when it rains, our crews can't go out, so the scheduling on that day. The reason we put the tags on the door, we didn't change out their meter. What happens is, the underground wire coming up in the house, it's not properly tamped. The weight of the ground pulls the wire down, and we know our electricians go up there, and if we pull their meter, what's going to happen is, their block is going to break. And so, we put a notice on their door saying, before we pull your meter, you need to get this fixed, because the wire is pulling so tight, it's got the whole thing twisted. Occasionally, the guy can't see that weight, and we pull it, and their block breaks, and we cannot reinsert the meter. By code, we have to have access to change that meter out and do things. We'll see what we can do to get notification.
Is this going to change now that the temperatures beginning to drop, and we're getting in these 28-degree days and 28-degree nights? I mean, hopefully, we're not out there doing this stuff and pulling meters.
It's only during the daytime, and we'll do it.
Yeah, but what happens if these people are at work? We break the meter, we can't reinstall it, and they're going to go through a 28-degree night at home with no heat. We got to reevaluate this.
Yeah, well, and the only technical, we don't break the meter, all we do is pull it, the wire breaks the meter.
But if it's broken, whether it's our fault, not our fault, it's broken, and they have no heat.
Understand.
So, we're in a cold spell, we need to figure this out before we get into that.
And we don't cut during cold weather, so we'll try to do what we can.
Okay. Follow-up, I had someone who I directed to call, Alderman Edwards, to let them know as well, as a personal acquaintance of mine that called with that exact problem. Luckily for him, his son went home early from school. They let out for early one day. He got home, saw the note on the door, had no power, called his dad. His dad was worried about the sump pump. He took off of work, got home, and started the backup generator while the sump pump was a half an inch from basically flooding the finished basement. So, there are a number of things. You could have people with freezers full of food, you could have people with the sump pumps, you could have medical, there's a number of things going on. And he said, CWLP was very polite with him. They explained it exactly as Eric just did, about the wires, about the ground settling, about how it is their responsibility, building codes. But I agree 100% with what Frank's saying. We're talking about people who've invested into their home. This is by no fault of theirs, they aren't the ones who built those boxes. We need to find some way to contact them and let them know that we're coming.
Mr. Mayor, Director, is there any way that we can maybe send out notices alerting people that they maybe need to get these boxes checked?
It's house by house in a neighborhood. You'll go, and 12 houses will be just fine, and the next two are bad.
But I'm saying, though, for instance, if I'm not aware that I may need to have an electrician come out and check it.
That, it gets a little bit tricky, because we're the ones that can pull the meter, we've got them locked, so people don't tamper with them. So, we actually have to go out there with an electrician to pull it, see if it breaks. So, it ends up being.
It's kind of a catch-20.
Yeah, a catch.
Okay.
So, yeah, this is an issue that we have to deal with, because we have to have access to those meters. And we definitely fight this issue of how to do it, because there's other times where it's not related to the, and we're not putting in smart meters, we're putting in remote read meters. We don't have smart meters, they're not communicating many devices in the house or anything. They're just electronic reads, so that you don't have to go to the house, you can get it from the street read. But, because a lot of people have issues with smart meters. These are meters with remote read capability.
I'm just telling you what she told me.
Yeah, I understand. And there's, I just do that as a clarification, because there's a whole anti-smart meter movement, and we're not putting in smart meters, we're putting in remote read meters. So, but, yeah, we do struggle with this, because we understand the customer, we've had this issue before, where customer calls on the weekend, they got lights flickering, our guy goes out there to pull the meter, they clean up the contacts, when he pulls it, it breaks. And now, the customer has to call an electrician on the weekend, and they're paying overtime, because that's, they have to fix that on the house. Our guys can't even touch that equipment, and all they can do is pull the meter out. And so, yeah, that's an issue we struggle with, and we try, our guys are very sensitive to that. When they see that, they try to put that tag and say, get this fixed, so we can come back out and fix it without causing any problems. And that's, that's why we came up with the whole tag system, is to notify the customer.
Alderman Tyland brought up the leaf pickup program, and as long as this, this meeting is being broadcast on the city's cable channel, we might as well get out what the dates for that are. Do you know?
November 3rd to November 24th.
November 24th.
And they ask that people have them out by 7:00 on Monday morning.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we will stick it on the homepage.
Thank you.
Get it set up. Okay, we have five people that have signed up to speak tonight. The first is Anna McHugh. Okay, Abby Gibson. Anna, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name is actually Tabitha Gibson, 3725 Poria Road.
Thank you.
I'm actually speaking for Anna McHugh, and the reason that we are speaking is on behalf of the homeless community in Springfield. It is getting very cold. Alderman Edwards, who's actually my Alderman, did speak about 28-degree nights and below, it's going to be a harsh winter, and we need outreach programs. We need somebody going out and telling people about our SOS shelters. We need funding for the SOS shelters, so that they're actually hiring people for those, as opposed to Salvation Army paying them, and we don't know how long we'll be able to do that. There is no guarantee that we're going to be able to continue SOS through March 31st. And I know that you guys have a lot of funding issues as it is. All I'm asking for is awareness. Be aware of what's going on, be aware that we are three times, we have three times more of a homeless community than we started with three years ago. It is growing significantly every year for a variety of reasons. We have a lot of well-educated, employed people who are just homeless. They don't have anywhere. We have nowhere for intact families. We have nowhere for mentally handicapped, they don't really know where to go. We need more effective case management from HUC, from Helping Hands, from Salvation Army. We need people who can actually help these people and help them become independent living all by themselves. I work with a very nice man who had an illness, lost his job that he'd been at for 30 years, and is now in transitional housing, because he was not taught how to save money to prepare for this. This is all that I'm trying to do, is get information out there. We're very concerned about CWLP and whether they're going to have power, but some of these people don't have homes, or blankets, or food, and they're freezing to death. And I just don't want to see that happen again this year. And that's all that I wanted to do, was to kind of step forward and make everyone aware of what we're trying to do, of what I myself am trying to do, as far as getting to know these people and why they're out here, and is it your own choice to be on the streets, or is there something that somebody can do to help you? Make them aware of what organizations do have the capabilities to help them right now. But it's going to be bad this year, and I just, I don't want to see another person die.
Well, thank you. And the, in terms of the funding for the SOS, we have provided funding for that, we have provided additional funding when it has been needed, so that if it is cold going later than what we've anticipated, we've kept it open if it gets colder before, we've opened it sooner. So, I don't think you have to worry in terms of the funding being there. And that's just something that, you know, we have some flexibility in terms of working with, and we've done that.
Okay.
You may not be aware of it, but I mean, that's, that does happen. It happened last year, and I think probably happened a year before, too.
Well, I know, myself and my group, we're doing it. But, you know, anyone who's just out there and working downtown that can see these people and just kind of get to know them, maybe if it's only one person, just get to know them and see why they're there.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Ms. Gibson. Are you affiliated with a charitable or religious organization?
I am not. I'm affiliated with a not-for-profit group, but nothing that would actually have anything to do with this.
Okay, thank you.
There. Ms. Gibson, what's the name of your not-for-profit group?
No More Victims Too.
Okay. Well, I think this count, and we appreciate your coming here and bringing this to our attention, and I think the council, here's what you're saying, and a couple, I think it was a couple, at our last council meeting, this council did appropriate, I think, about $40,000 in roundup funds, which are voluntarily donated funds by CWLP customers to pay for the cost of the overflow shelter, which is operated by the Salvation Army during the winter months. So, we're trying to do what we can to help the homeless, and we appreciate your bringing it to our attention. Thanks.
And we're also funding that through the program.
Right, and we also provide a TIP funding for the Salvation Army to build, you know, shelter, their new shelter on 9th Street.
Build a forest and building.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Buzz Nanavadi. And again, if you'd just state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Buzz Nanavadi. I live at 1501 Williams Boulevard in Ward 7 of Springfield, Illinois. After graduating from Springfield High School, my schooling has taken me to Texas for my bachelor's degrees, and Washington State for my master's in anthropology, specializing in environmental archaeology. Currently, I'm an intern at the Illinois State Museum's Department of Boden and Landscape History, and I'm studying how fire has affected ecosystems of the Ozark Highlands of southern Missouri over the past 2,000 years. I consider my return to Springfield as a chance to catch up with family and old friends, and to take a moment, and to further my trainings before I pursue my PhD in environmental sciences. I'd like to take this moment to thank the City Council for giving me a chance to speak at this time. Today, I'm here to ask the City Council to consider the retirement of Dolman Units 1 and 2. Residents have spoken out about this issue at past City Council meetings, and public sentiment has only grown stronger for this cause. At this time, 910 signatures from local individuals and 30 sign-ons from local businesses and organizations have been collected, calling for the retirement of Dolman Units 1 and 2. Growing up in Springfield, I have always had a positive impression about CWLP. It was a place that all my friends went to get a job in high school, and offered the best fishing spots in Lake Springfield. I find it exciting that CWLP is a municipal utility, and that, as a resident, I actually have a, have some input into how things are operated there. I care about this issue because I value the environment, clean air, and the prosperity of my hometown. I'm a local person, and a solution like this simply makes sense to me. I would like to see my hometown phase out the aging infrastructure in favor of an investment in a cleaner Springfield, because that is what makes sense for our community. Central Illinois is part of a global climatological system. Given last week's release of the International Panel on Climate Change Assessment on the Mitigation of Climate Change, now is a better time than any to move towards a more efficient and sustainable energy platform. The IPCC concludes that climate change is set to inflict severe, widespread, and irreversible impacts on the environment and economies unless carbon emissions are cut sharply and rapidly. What this means for us Central Illinoisans is that, without action to reduce our carbon emissions, we could contribute to the failure of our own agricultural systems, which will be detrimental to our local and national economy. In the long run, CWLP will be faced with either closing down the dated Units 1 and 2, or further costs of upgrading them to increasingly strict regulations. At the local public health level, according to a 2014 study by the Clean Air Task Force, fine particle pollution emitted by the Dolman Power Plant is responsible for 79 asthma attacks and five premature deaths each year. Regardless of the codes that the Dolman Plant needs, there is no question that coal combustion in such close vicinity to our community has negative health effects. The Dolman Plant emits heavy metals that pollute our water systems and lead to neurological damage. We can reduce these negative effects by reducing the amount of coal we burn. Ultimately, the question is, why not retire the oldest two units now? We are using aging technology, and reliance on coal is meeting increased resistance globally. The continued operation of dated Units 1 and 2 does nothing to benefit our community. We need, we have seen success stories from communities in the Midwest and with similar situations that did not result in layoffs or financial problems. Other places are taking action, and so should we, before it becomes even more dire and difficult. The bottom line is that we have heard representatives at CWLP and understand that something needs to be done to address the coming technical default. So far, nothing that I have heard as a citizen has convinced me that the retiring of Units 1 and 2 is a bad decision, and nothing has shown me that the retiring of Units 1 and 2 will cause more harm than the burden of using dated technology that hurts our air quality, our health, and the global climate system. CWLP has long been a forward-thinking utility, and we just want it to stay that way. The citizens of Springfield are proud of having municipal utility and having the ability to have a say in its operations. Thank you for the time that you've allowed me to speak, and we would be happy to talk with the City Council at the conclusion of this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Nanavadi. Now, you are aware that our both Dolman 31 and Dolman 32 meet all the federal and state standards, and in the state of Illinois, the state of Illinois standards are higher than the federal level.
This is correct, and what I'm saying is that there's a potential that restrictions can increase.
The restrictions you're talking about will go into effect at the federal level in 2016. We already exceed their standards. By the state of Illinois has higher standards than the federal government.
Okay. Well, then, I will instruct you to turn towards the citation that we can provide you. We can do that after the meeting. Sure.
Okay, next, we have Tony Pinehurst, Parkhurst.
I'm Mr. Parkhurst, who lives at 1016 Johnson Lane.
Thank you.
Start off with, I'd like to thank him for preceding me. I can echo that. I would take it from a cost point of view. We are in our second default for 7.5 million on the power plant. It's ruining our credit rating. It seems that the city and certain other boats are beholden to the stockholders and the customers in what's best for CWLP, but not the citizens of Springfield. I believe that the city, quite possibly, by certain figures, were already $600 million in bonds. We borrowed $600 million in 2006. At that time, we hadn't even paid our pension funds and got them caught up. So, there's another $230 million. And we have certain people saying that we're in a positive financial state, and you can look at any figure and come up with anything you want, but the bottom line is, if we, I asked this question to the City Council in a letter, probably about a year and a half ago, when one of the board members, or the council members, asked the CWLP representative at that time, well, why don't we think about selling it? He said it wasn't a buyer's market, or a seller's market. I was like, well, so my question was, when is it going to be? When it gets to the point where CWLP... When it, when it gets to the point where CWLP bankrupts the city and owns the city?" Another thing is, that we talked about laws and statutory laws. At the last couple meetings, or a couple weeks ago, there's some misstatements, misrepresentations, falsifications, verifications of statutory law by the mayor and corporate counsel. The statute clearly states certain things. Corporate counsel then proceeded to give me two other things, two other statutes. Now, he misstated facts in those statutes too. He said $100 million, or $100,000, I believe the figure is $1 million. I can find nowhere in anything that says that we have to hire a representative for a private citizen. That's what that ordinance says, the officer and his girlfriend. The first ordinance where you guys passed is actually, I don't know if that's considered public funds or not, the roundup, but that's considered public funds, that was passed in direct violation of the Illinois State Constitution, which clearly states that any legislature, town, municipality, anybody cannot use public funds for any religious or sectarian group. And right above that, there's another interesting thing on the environment, where no legislation, when you go to pass a law, it should be taken into consideration the environmental impact and how it's going to better our future for our children, not worsen it. There's a bunch of other things I'd like to talk about, but that's just where, kind of where I wanna leave it right now. I do have several questions for it, I want some explanations, I want some answers from the last letter I sent almost a year and a half, two years ago, that I filed with the city clerk after the meeting, had a copy for everybody. I sent every, one of the councilmen, council members, an email with certain questions. I, I believe not only I deserve the right to know these answers, the citizens of this city deserve to know the right, the answers to these questions. Last thing I wanna say is, when we're talking about city holidays, there's a group that out there now promoting a return to the rightful meaning of Armistice Day for Veterans Day, where it was a celebration and a commemoration that's held sacredly, you know, as the end and a call for peace, where the church bells rang in, in the cities on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, occurring after World War II, or World War I, allegedly the war to end all wars. I think it'd be good practice. Other than that, I'm sure I could clarify some more at a different time, but that's all I gotta say tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. James Meister.
James Meister, 2100 East Monroe Street, Springfield.
Thank you.
I'd address a couple of things real quick before I get to what I wanted. Apparently, I do pay attention while I'm sleeping, because CWLP stuff puts me to sleep in here, but I'd like to applaud CWLP and the fact that they are above and exceeding past the limits that are not even set yet. They know they're there and are past those already. I also know that they're, and you guys have voted and passed, the upgrades of these units. So the, this, this is a mute point, these meetings have been going on about these units for too long, and CWLP is doing a great job. The leaf pickup. We need to put also in there that these people can take their own leaves out there during these times, as well as tree branches throughout the year. Let them know that. They got a truck, haul them out there where they can take them to, so that it's not so much on our city vehicles, because that is allowed, as long as you're a citizen of Springfield. So add that to your website. What I am actually here for is, does everybody know who Danielle, Danielle Allen is? I think that's the right name. She's a 16-year-old girl that lost her life due to a drunk driving accident a couple of weeks ago. I have been paying attention to Springfield bars, I go to the bars. I don't drink. I go to a bar with my friend, I pay $2 for a four-ounce soda, he pays a dollar for a beer. On holidays, a handful of holidays, the city bars will say, "All right, we're not gonna charge for designated drivers to drink." It's a good idea, but as soon as that holiday's over with, they're done with it. We need to make an ordinance that targets, I think they, he said, A and double A liquor license, that they can no longer charge for non-alcoholic drinks. We need a reason for designated drivers to go into the bars. They're being punished for not drinking, because it costs more to drink a soda or a cup of coffee than it does to get drunk. No, bars don't support drinking and driving, it's why they have such big parking lots. We can't stop people from driving their cars to bars, but we can ask bars that if they want a liquor license, that it'll cost them tens of dollars, not hundreds, not thousands, tens of dollars, it's 12 cents to make a pot of coffee. Make it an ordinance now that they can no longer charge to allow somebody to be sober in their bar. I'd like to see you guys support Danielle, make her life at least worth something, that we can get more designated drivers into these bars, or that people can stop drinking an hour or so before they're supposed to leave, and have some coffee or something to help sober them up, and not be punished for it. Give them an incentive to quit drinking early. That's my hope and my prayers go out to her, to her family. She was took down at 16-years-old. I will be speaking about this with the Sangamon County Liquors Association on the 19th, about the same ordinance for Sangamon County as well. I know that restaurants have to pay for sodas and stuff, but if you wanna blanket it, put in some ordinance, or some options that they're allowed to sell up till like 9:00, from 9:00 on, they can't sell non-alcoholic drinks. Let's do something with these ordinances to just make Danielle's life worth something, 'cause she's, she's gone at 16. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Simpson, have a happy birthday. We hope you enjoy it tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
I've set the motion for adjournment.
So much.
Discussion, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.